Uh, first of all, I'd like to welcome everyone and call this meeting to order. A real call, please.
Director Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
President James Fairman.
Present.
Thank you.
Um. Is there any public present? Uh, that would like to address the board?
No, sir. There are no members of the public present at HQ.
Okay. Uh, items of discussion. Discussion regarding the Costa Mesa Sanitary District's COVID-19 response. Um, Scott, are you going to take this or?
Sure, sure. I can, I can start off with this. Thank, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, a- as everyone is aware, um, uh, every day it's, uh, it's been changing, uh, our, our way of life with, uh, the COVID-19. It seems like it by every hour, we're getting new information. Um, I know the board is, is concerned or wants some information on what we're doing, what CMSD is doing in its response to, uh, COVID-19. Um, I believe, Nolai, did they get the, the bullet points of everything we're doing, the board?
Yes, everybody should have a copy of the bullet points.
Okay. So I was, I was just.
This is like, I did not get a copy of that.
Yeah, I don't have a copy either.
I, I don't either.
I don't have one neither.
I have one because I'm at the office, so.
I will send it right now. It was included in the agenda packet, but I will resend it right now.
Do you, do you want me to, uh, wait till you receive it or do I can go down and just verbally describe what we've done?
Oh, go ahead.
I think you can go down with us. It's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, so.
I'm afraid to.
So I'll just read down, uh, what we've done, um, since, uh, our response to, to the coronavirus. Uh, we first, we, uh, on March thirteenth, we prepared and disseminated a press release to, to the public, uh, that, uh, also went on social media. Describe, describing to the, letting the public know that, uh, trash collections and all the other services is not disrupted. It's basically business as usual for, for CMSD. We did post on social media, um, what to flush down the toilets because there has been concerns and I think we've been hearing some rumors that people are just flushing everything down their toilets. So we wanted to remind people just to, the flush, the three Ps, the, the pee, the poop and the paper. Um, we also.
You may want to add it, should have said toilet paper because when I said that, well, you should have said toilet.
Okay, well, 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 good, good point. Well, we'll, we'll stress, uh, pay, uh, toilet paper. When we pay, we don't mean like newspapers or anything like that. We mean toilet paper.
You know how people, you know how people are though.
Yeah, that's true. Very true. Um, then we also posted on social media to encourage residents to register with, uh, the Orange County's Mass Public Notification System, Alert OC. Um, this will give them important emergency updates on the coronavirus. Um, some of our, our wastewater staff had expressed concerns for their safety. Um, could they catch the, the disease through wastewater? Um, they required some additional, um, uh, protective gear such as face shields. So, uh, we acquired those face shields and they should be, uh, should, they should be arriving any day now. We're constantly sanitizing HQ and the yard with disinfectant, so, so David is, is constantly cleaning, uh, the entire facilities. Uh, we're also making sure that hand sanitizers and tissues are made available to staff and the public. Yesterday, we revised our curbing procedures, uh, where plans must be submitted online. And if, if anyone makes payments, um, they can do it online through PayPal or call us on the phone through the credit card. We put a sign up on the front door, uh, uh, describing to the plumbers that this is our new procedures or temporary procedures that we will not accept paper, uh, plans. It has to be submitted electronically. We are attending REROC, REROC's daily briefings and we receive daily briefings from the county OES, so we're updated constantly. Uh, we are also following OSHA's latest COVID-19 guidelines for protecting employees, which is a very thorough document, very good document, and I'm glad we have, so we're, we're following those guidelines. We developed a new, uh, leave policy, um, for COVID-19. We, we were concerned, obviously there is, there's, we have some employees that their children are not in school anymore, so there's some daycare issues and they might have to stay home. Uh, there's also concerns of what happens if someone's getting infected and they use all their leave. What can they do? So we quite, we, we developed a new leave policy. Um, this is going to change because now that the, um, the federal government has allowed for, um, paid, uh, sick leave um, during, during this crisis, uh, but our, our leave policy, what it would do is that if they exhaust all their leave, like their, their sick leave, their vacation, their holiday leave, and they have no more leave on the books unless, and they got infected, we would, uh, basically loan them sick time, um, where, um, they would still get paid on their sick time. And then when they come back to work, they would pay back the district, um, from deductions out of, of their paychecks. Uh, that way they'll give them a little bit of peace of mind that they don't have to worry about paying their bills while they're, while they're trying to recover. I, I, we think that would be a big help, so we, we disseminated that policy to staff yesterday. Uh, we also, um, canceled, um, public events as requested, as required by, um, uh, the CDC and OC Health. For example, we canceled SEPA. Uh, we had some, we were, we were hosting some CSD workshops in April that was canceled as well. We also acquired some additional supplies from REROC. Um, they, they asked us if they want any additional, uh, personal protection equipment. So we requested ten Tyvek suits. Those are the white suits you see, uh, people wear. We requested fifteen boxes of latex gloves, ten pairs of, uh, g- goggles, fifty paper masks, in, in ninety-five masks and twenty personal, uh, bottles of hand sanitizer. So those are on the way as well.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Because on above thing you said you're going to give hand sanitizer out to, uh, people that, you know, this public, is twenty going to be enough?
No, I think that's more for, for staff. That, that's for staff.
It says available to staff and the public.
Yeah, well, we have, those are, those are just the bottle ones, so when they want, they come in, they, they just, you know, they can use us, they can just.
Oh, they'll use it, use it themselves, so.
Yeah, when they're, when they're in the lobby or in the boardroom, they could just, you know, squirt themselves some hand sanitizer.
Okay.
So as I mentioned earlier, the, the wastewater staff was, was concerned that they could get, um, the virus through wastewater. Um, and they're not alone. Um, I talked to my colleagues in Newport Beach. Their, their wastewater workers are, had the same concerns. And we did some research, uh, Vice President Uten helped out too with some research. And while we did, while the CDC did confirm that, uh, they had found the coronavirus in, um, in stool, but there is no, um, indication that it's contagious, uh, through wastewater. And according to the CDC, with fact, we, we have a copy of the CDC's guidelines. Um, they're recommending that, um, wastewater sewage workers should use standard practices, basic hygiene precautions and where their personal protective equipment as prescribed for current work tasks, and that's what we told our staff to do. As long as they keep doing, using their same safety procedures, protect them from E. coli and, uh, hepatitis, uh, they'll, they'll be fine. But if there's any other additional equipment they want, we'll get it for them, which is like, like the, um, acquired face shields. We, we're, we're getting those for them.
Hey Scott, let me, let me throw, Scott, let me throw something in real quick.
Sure.
On that. Uh, there was an article in the Orange County Register about sewer being infected.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know if we need to reach out to the register or if county fan needs to, but someone needs to, to educate the register before this gets worse.
Yeah, I agree. We saw that story. Uh, I, I, I talked to Peter Whittingham yesterday. We're going to prepare a response, press release. We'll do that today.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I, Mike, I was just going to comment on that too because I have it on the Roth sewage. They're saying it may be, they're not sure, but it's, it is a concern and I think we should have something put in the paper so that, you know, they have the idea that it isn't anything to do with tap water. The tap water is fine. It's just that, that they're saying, uh, maybe on the Roth sewage.
Right, right. We'll, we'll get something out to try to calm any, any fears down. So we'll get that out today. Um, we're also, uh, tracking all our costs related to, uh, COVID-19 because now that the, uh, President Trump has declared a state of emergency, um, all our, our costs associated with, uh, COVID-19 is, is reimbursable, possibly reimbursed. So we're keeping track of all our costs and all the staff's time so we can get reimbursed on this. Uh, we, we did activate our ELC to level one. Um, we have our web ELC, um, up, up and running so we can see what other agencies are, are, are dealing with and, and what they're requesting. We're also, um, um, going to implement a contract with National Plant Services to assist with operations for cleaning our sewer system. Uh, we're down two employees. One employee, uh, resigned and went to, um, Orange County Water District. Another employee resigned. These are two newest employees. Uh, he didn't, he just, just didn't like, um, the wastewater field and went back to, uh, his old job as being a lone officer. So, um, we're down two people. So now we only have one crew cleaning. So if the crew gets sick, then we're really in a bind, so we're going to have National Plant Help Us clean. So we're implementing a contract with them. And then we're also implementing a con- contract with Gemini, um, Services to assist with any pump station maintenance if we need it. Right now we're okay, but if we need it, we, we want to, um, be sure to call them. And then.
Scott.
Yes.
Scott, this is Arlene. Um, I'm assuming that we're right there with Sowana as far as, uh, what's going on? If, you know, communicating, because I know I'm getting a lot of it, so I'm thinking maybe the word is too of what's happening in the United States period and so that we can keep up to date on our own selves.
Yes, well, like I said, we, we disseminate, um, uh, a press release telling the public that your trash is going to be picked up. No, there's no disruptive services. I mean, you should, i- i- if you haven't seen your, your, um, trash picked up already, it should have. I know mine did yesterday. So, you know, we want to, we want to make sure that the public is aware that we're trying to be, you're trying to normalize our, um, way of life the best we could. So that's why it's important for us, um, to have our, our trash trucks picking up. We're also still having Ed working out there, so, so he's visible. So just to make sure that, try to, try to bring normalcy as best as we can. And then lastly, I want to mention, um, which we're doing right now is teleconferencing, uh, with the Board Directors Meeting. Um, again, that's, um, complying with, um, federal and state guidelines to try to, um, separates, you know, be sure we're separated, you know, four to six feet and, and if we have to stay home, so, so, so far uh, our, our first test of our teleconference seems to be working fine. Um, and maybe we'll probably be doing this on, on Monday as well, so. So that's everything we've been doing, uh, and it's, it's a, it's like I said, every day it's changing. I'm constantly meeting with staff. Uh, we've had two, um, uh, teleconference meetings, uh, through Skype and Zoom. So I, I'm in touch with staff through, through, uh, teleconferencing and emails. So, um, it's, it's, so we're, we're doing all we can.
All right, I have a question. I have a question for Alan. Alan, are you on?
Yeah, I am.
Do we need some type of proclamation that we're, you know, going with Governor Newsom's executive order in twenty-five dash twenty? Allows Calum's member, or, Senator, Board Members to attend meetings telephonically? Do we need a proclamation like that at all?
I don't think we need a proclamation, but, uh, any, uh, kind of proclamation you'd want to do would just show you're being proa- proactive. But the governor just did, um, he, he first, uh, waived some of the, uh, requirements for teleconferencing and then, uh, just, uh, in the last twenty-four hours, I think he waived it further so that we no longer have to have a physical location for the public to address the board. So, uh, those orders are coming down fast and furious, just like the ones that, at the county are coming down fast and furious. And it, uh, you know, you have to stay on top of it because it's, it is changing quickly.
The city council, I went to the meeting on Tuesday night and that's what they did. The first thing on the agenda was to explain what Governor Newsom had issued so that the public knew. But I'm, I'm sure the public knows now, but I just thought it might be something to consider.
We could put a press release out saying the same thing.
Scott, this is Arlene. Scott, uh, are we, uh, getting a daily report as far as CRNR? What's going on with them, with all our whole district? I know, my, my trash was picked up yesterday, no problem. But the idea is to keep everybody calm about what's going on through CRNR. I don't know if they're putting.
We're, we're in contact with them. If there, if there's any issues, they'll let us know, but it, like I said, it's business as usual. There's any, if there's any large item collections, they're doing, they're picking them up in HSW. They're picking it up. Um, again, there's no, no change of services for, for, uh, CRNR.
Great.
Uh, Scott, uh, this is Bob. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, Bob.
Um, one, one thing the staff, uh, requested were face shields. Uh, I think you can get them at, um, um, uh, the hardware stores. Um, you know, the plastic face shield.
Yeah.
And, uh, and they also thought they might need respirators and I think that's a bad idea because if sewage flashes on them, which is their concern, um, you know, it'll, it'll, it'll be embedded in the, in the respirators and they could just wipe off the face shield. I think the face shields are probably necessary when they make a mistake about hydro flushing. You know, they pull it out and it's still going. Yeah, I, may, maybe some retraining in the, in the, uh, in the hydro jetting, uh, would be appropriate or at least, um, taking care that all staff understand how to do that properly. That's probably the major risk for them.
Sure. Yeah, that's a good suggestion. Um, we, we, we have two face shields, uh, face shields already on, um, um, in, in our supplies and we did order some more, so they're on their way. Um, and if we couldn't get any, any supplies from any hardware stores or.
Oh.
Line, um, the county ELC will get them for us, so we're in constant, we're in communication with the county, um, and REROC for supplies. Um, they're our last shop, um, avenue, so we can't get anywhere else. The county says, come to us, we will get it for you. But we have the face shields. They are, um, on their way, if not already delivered. Um, the respirators, I agree, Bob, we don't, that's unnecessary.
Yeah, and, and probably, uh, um, defeats the purpose because if, if it splashes, it'll, it'll get it wet. Can't clean it.
Well, well, not only that, the respirator, there's, there's, there's certain, the regulations we have to follow. We have, we have to adopt a, 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 a policy on that. Um, you have to be fitted. I mean, it's just, uh, a respirator, you just don't grab it off the shelf and put it on. There's some procedures you have to follow and that takes time.
Yep, we went through all that at Orange County San.
Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Hey Scott, this is Mike. All right, can you hear me?
Yes, Mike, go ahead.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, Monday, we had a power outage. I think you probably know at the California Pump Station.
Yes, we did.
Uh, Edison cut our power off at four in the morning and it wasn't restored until four in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Um, I understand that Edison is going through their maintenance procedures. And I just, I, I think we need to be proactive with Edison to have, make sure they let us know if you don't already know when they're doing the outages.
They might be, the city put out a thing that Edison's not going to do anything for a month or two, any more interruptions like that. Came out from the, from Costa Mesa.
Okay, in that, in that same vein, Scott, so our power came back at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
And we left the generator running all the way till the next morning. Is that standard procedure?
Um, no, um, we, we do get messages from, from Edison when they have plant outages and so we can, we can be proactive and get the generators out before the, the outages occur. Um, this one was, I don't believe it was a plant outage. We did get.
I agree.
We did.
Yeah, I don't think, I, like I said, I got a text from Edison because I have a medical device. And so I could text it at four o'clock in the morning saying that the power, uh, it said, your power is out. Well, we are, obviously already knew that, but, but again, CMSD, we left that generator running all night long and I just wondered if we shouldn't be coming up to turn it off or do whatever.
Yeah, I'll, I'll double check with staff. Like I said, we, we will get notifications when, um, there's power outage and then we get notifications when it's been restored. So, um, I don't know why it was out that long, but, um, we'll do better job on that.
No, no, I, I, so maybe you didn't, they didn't, staff didn't get the notification the power is back on. I'm sure that's possible.
It, or it's, or it's possible we got the notification well after the power was restored.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Okay.
Do you think we need to, uh, uh, monitor some of the, uh, information coming from Orange County Sand District? And, uh, some of the other, uh, things to be, uh, to make sure that we're complying with what the government expects from us?
Well, we're getting, we're getting the, I, I, OCSC is getting the same information we're getting. So what they're sending us is nothing new. Um, so we're, we're tied into, uh, REROC, we're tied into the county ELC, so a lot of time we might be getting information before they do, or I'm assuming we get it simultaneously.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we brush them the teeth and dot in the eyes.
Yep.
Oh, I, uh, uh, Jim.
If anybody doesn't.
Jim, Herbert, Herbert sends out, uh, briefings and, and I am sending them on.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I've got them, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sending them on to Scott.
Okay, okay, good.
Jim, you might do the same thing.
Yeah.
And if anybody doesn't know, the county did issue a new order, uh, that amended the, that order they did Wednesday, St. Patrick's Day. And it, uh, basically, uh, did not shut down all businesses, you know, or tell people to shelter and they had the language in there that, uh, a- any gathering of any number of people was prohibited in a business and that caused mass panic and lots of businesses shut down that didn't need to shut down. And then they corrected it and now it's, uh, basically, unless you're one of the businesses that are required to shut down, you can operate as long as you use, uh, social distancing to the extent you can. And of course, government is considered an essential service in many cases and they can operate, uh, by different rules.
Yeah. Uh, so we, I know we have the meeting on the twenty-third. Uh, is there any other meetings coming up? That we may not be aware of?
Nolai, I, I think that, Nolai, if you can answer that question. We have the twenty-third and then I think our next meeting would be the study session in April, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we do have like the Policy Review Committee on the thirtieth and then Art and I are supposed to meet with Scott on the thirty-first. Are we gonna, how are we going to handle those?
Well, I think that, I, I think the thirty-first would be fine. I mean, it's, it's less than three people. It's less than ten. It's, it's, you know, again, it's not, um, um.
Okay, I agree. I think, I think we can do that, just for three of us.
Okay. Uh, the, the, let me ask, let me ask a pointed question, Mr. Carroll. Have you been tested?
No, um, I actually asked, requested that, um, yesterday with staff. Hey, maybe I can get, you know, with my position and, and government, maybe I can get it ahead of the line and get tested. And the county said, no, I have to go through my health, healthcare agency to request a testing. And they said, because I, I don't show any symptoms, I'm already put in the back of the line. So, um, I really, I started thinking about maybe I shouldn't probably get tested. I should keep, because they're still limiting testing right now. I should keep. My feeling is let the people that are really sick get tested.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate you, yeah, I, I agree and I appreciate you saying that. I just, you know, you have to realize you're, you're working with five seniors and, uh, you need to be careful of those five seniors.
Well, well, Mike, you bring up, Mike, you bring up a good point and this is one, a topic I want to talk about. In fact, Alan's gonna, is gonna share with you some more information. We, we had the discussion. What happens if the three of you get to come down with a vi- virus and can't, and now we can't have any meetings? And we need, we need board meetings to approve warrants. Um, so, so Alan's going to kind of explain to you what, what do we do if that happens? If, if we come, if we don't have a quorum, what's our next step? So Alan, if you want to take it from here?
Sure, um, it's not really good news. I mean, to be, uh, removed, uh, from office or to have an office be vacant, you either have to resign or be declared incapacitated physically or mentally by a court proceeding that we all know, quorinto. And so you can just imagine what it would involve. It would be, you know, you'd have to have the symptoms and you'd have to not be coming to meetings. And, you know, if it was, you know, I, we all assume that if somebody was not going to be able to function, they'd resign. But if they held on for a while, um, then, you know, you'd have to go through a proceeding. It would involve some medical evidence, probably. A court proceeding and then you'd have to, then there's a, once it's declared vacant, then there's a sixty-day process to appoint a replacement. Or if you don't, then the county board of sues makes a replacement. So it's a long cumbersome process, so, um, you, you know, I guess we're going to be relying on if anybody does get sick and can't function and we go down and can't have a quorum that, um, you know, resignation is going to be uh, what we'd probably ask of people that were, got so sick that they could not, no longer participate. And we know you would probably if you were in your right mind, but you know, things happen.
But Alan, Alan, this is Arlene. Uh, couldn't we still be doing it through a webinar if something happens?
Oh yeah, you can still teleconference. Yeah, you could be on your, uh, yeah, you can be on your, uh, you know, in your hospital room on a ventilator and you could still participate. And we have a quorum and, uh, life goes on.
Yeah, okay.
But Alan, but, I mean, is, is, I mean, I've seen some of these, I've seen some of these patients that, that are, are, are ser- have the virus and they're serious ill. Could, I don't know, can, can someone like think coherently on that? I, I don't know if that's, you know, I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but you know.
No, no, that's a good, that's a good point and that's the law set up to, uh, you know, say that's not an easy thing to have determined. I mean, involves medical evidence thing. This person can no longer, uh, think for themselves and these are, these are tough situations in all of life when somebody loses the ability to make, uh, mental decisions. And it usually involves the courts and, and medical evidence. And it's just not going to be easy, so we hope, you know, that doesn't happen to any of you, but certainly not to three of you so that the district can't function. But I, I think having had this discussion, we'll kind of let everybody know that, you know, as soon as, if one person goes down, we start, need to start thinking about it.
So how are you, Arlene?
Pardon?
How are you?
No, I'm, I seem to be fine.
Okay. Just wait.
The Board of Directors.
Yeah, well, I've had, I've had a cough for four months, but I don't think that could be related to the coronavirus. But someday when they free up, uh, doctor's office, I may go back again.
So, so Board of Directors, based on what we heard from, from Alan, um, in, in this really more questions for Director Perry and Schaefer, our meeting on the thirty-first, would you feel more comfortable with just do teleconference?
No, I'd rather come in, because we can, we can be six feet apart.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, that's, it's over a week and a half away. We should be fine.
Okay.
But go back to Mike's first question about the thirtieth, that ad hoc committee. Are we still on for that?
Well, right now it's still scheduled. Do you want to, do, um, what do you want to do on that?
I'd like to do it as, just so we can wrap, wrap it up. I think we could probably wrap it up in one more meeting, I think. What do you think, Mike?
Well, let me ask you, I, I've got a, I've got a new policy I want the, the, the committee to review. It's, it's, um, board guidelines, uh, for, um, you know, running meetings, um, which was hot, which was recommended by CSDA. Um, Alan's finished reviewing that for me and, and, um, I'm ready for the committee to review that. That's my first day back on the thirtieth. Maybe, um, if we can postpone that for another week so I get all the documents together and ready for, for, for the committee, would that be okay?
Yeah, that'd be okay with me.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that's fine with me as well.
If you can cancel that meeting and, and post and, and reschedule for another week?
Sure.
And, you know, if we don't have the, uh, CAC there, that's okay too, because we can wrap it up without the CAC if they can't.
Right, we'll make sure, and then we'll make sure that, uh, we have proper spacing too.
Yeah, we've got proper spacing.
A, a meeting that we haven't talked about is the Agenda Review Meeting. Will we be doing that by teleconference?
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah.
Uh, and that, and that's, uh, the sixth, Monday.
Six.
At what time?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty?
Six, eight-thirty?
That's just, that's just for Bob.
So that would be for President Fairman and Vice President Uten.
Yeah. So Monday, eight-thirty on the sixth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey Scott.
This is going to be a teleconference?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Director Schaefer, that's not a meeting that you would need to attend, so. It's just for Director Uten and President Fairman.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you. I didn't hear that.
Alan, 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 could you conclude, uh, a director use the power of attorney, uh, you know, to make decisions for them? Alan, are you still there? Alan? Anyway, that, that's a question that we can text looking later.
Now, was that Monday meeting on the sixth, uh, now that, we could, we can attend that. I mean, there's only two of us still, right?
Yeah, there's only two directors.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay. Okay, is that it or is there anything else?
I just wanted to let everybody know that I did have surgery on my hand. My doctor's not letting me go out at all and so I've been in period, so I'm not confusing anybody as far as what's going on, but I can do everything from my home.
Yeah. Okay, well, keep us posted.
Hey Jim, Jim, this is Mike. I had a question for Scott, if it's okay.
Sure.
Hey Scott, what, could you address what you're doing with your office staff in terms of work from home? What, what, what are you doing in the office?
Well, the good thing about our office is that everyone has our, has our office, um, in our building. So, so everyone's isolated in, in their, um, um, their social.
Yeah, so that, you know, that takes care of that problem.
Yeah, because you're, you're hearing, you're hearing a lot of city halls, like I just heard Newport Beach is closed, malls closed. But if you look and I think even Mesa Waters closed. malls closed, but if you look, and I think even Mason Waters closed. But if you go in those facilities, they have cubicles, they have open counters. So they have open space that is more vulnerable, uh, to, to being infected. Where we're pretty much enclosed. Now, we're still allowing the public to come into the lobby. Um, you know, if they have to drop off, let's say, some sharps or some medicine, because it's right in the front door. But our lobby's secured, and, and our front staff is behind a window and a wall, so they're advised not to go out to the lobby to meet anyone. But, um, so that's why we're a little bit different, and we can stay open and, and serve, service the public.
Well, I just think we need to be cautious, and, and you need to be, you need to listen to your staff. And if, if you have people on your office staff that are uncomfortable, or, I, I think, I just think we need to, to be sensitive to what they're, they're going through as well.
Absolutely. In fact, that's why we changed our, our policies for, um, the online plans, because, um, Bow was, was helping with a plumber, and I guess the plumber was coughing up a lung, and made him very nervous. And then the plumber, uh, used the iPad to pay for the, for, um, the fees. And so he was concerned. And so we listened to, to Bow, and that's why we changed the policy, that now we're only taking online plans, um, electronically, and we're making payments online. So absolutely, we listen to this.
Yeah, I, I knew, I knew you'd do, but I just, I think we need to make sure it's in the public.
Absolutely. One last thing I wanna mention.
Okay.
Um, if you can hear me, um, you know, Barry, is it Friedman, Barry Friedman?
Yeah, Friedman.
He, he asked, he asked if we wanna do a, um, a video, a public, a public service video a, a, about, I don't know, what we're doing as, as measures taken, um, that can be posted on social media. Um, I don't, is that something you wanna, want us to explore?
I'm not sure.
Uh, why not?
I, I'm not. Uh, I, I don't believe, I, I believe you, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just gonna say, he doesn't have a huge audience. I mean, I, I would rather see us concentrate our efforts where we get more bang for our buck and get, and go for the press releases and the, the bigger picture. Barry does a great job, but it doesn't get out to but a very few people.
You know, I'd rather see Channel Three say something about us, you know, as far as.
Three?
We did this.
I didn't know there was a Channel Three.
I didn't too.
Yeah, that's, that, there is, that's the city.
Yeah, the city's website. Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, Director Schaefer is right. We probably, if we're gonna go somewhere Channel Three appeared, we get more bang for our buck on Channel Three.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think we are in agreement.
Well, I'm, can, can, can you actually stop him from coming in and, uh, uh, videoing and whatnot?
No, no, but there's, well, I don't know, what's in the video when he comes in?
Bob, he wants to get paid, he wants to get paid.
Yes, exactly.
Oh.
You're right, Mark. That's the way it is.
Okay, I think I got my direction from the board, thank you.
Okay, anybody have anything else to bring up, uh?
Yeah.
When we finish, can Gina come in and show me how to get back onto this, that are, for board meeting? I'm like, I brought my iPad in, Gina.
You're all doing a good job, and staff-wise, and as far as Scott, wow, it's a lot to take in.
Well, staff, staff's been great, very professional and dedicated, and I, I tip my hat to them. I mean, they, they've been remaining calm and, and, and doing their work day to day.